Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call the Committee of the Whole meeting to order July 14th, 2025. We're sitting at four o'clock. Territorial acknowledgement. We respectfully acknowledge that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Lakongan-speaking peoples, represented by the Kosapsim and Songese nations, whose stewardship of these lands continues to this date. A couple of notes, we are having an issue with our live streaming section on our meeting portal and linking to iCompass. The provider has indicated that is a bug on their end and that is being investigated. We have updated the live stream function on the portal to include the link to our YouTube page for the public to watch live. Couple other notes for this afternoon. Mayor Doug Kobayashi sends his regrets as well as Counselor Ward. They will not be attending this afternoon. May I have, so item two, approval of the agenda? Can I get a mover to adopt today's Committee of the Whole agenda? So moved by Counselor Grove. Is, we don't need a second or for Committee of the Whole, I don't think. Thanks, Kim. Is there any discussion? No discussion. Anyone opposed? Nobody's opposed, so motion is carried. Next, moving to 3.0, adoption of the minutes. Can I get a mover to adopt the minutes of the May 12th, 2025 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes? Moved by Counselor Jansen. Is there any errors or omissions? Not seeing any, any discussion, not seeing any, anyone opposed, none, so motion carried, thank you. So we'll move to item 4.0, public participation. We've had one written submission has been submitted prior to agenda publication and is attached to the agenda. We have an updated eight written submissions have been received after agenda publication and will be attached to the agenda tomorrow. No members of the public have registered to speak virtually. Members of the public will now be given the opportunity to present concerns or ask questions. You'll be given two minutes, at which time you will see a green light, which means go amber is you are halfway through your time. And a red light means that your time is up. Alternatively, you may wish, you may wish to wait for the agenda item to be brought up and to speak to it at that time. Can I have a show of hands? We do have a member of the public in. Are you looking to speak during the public participation session? Okay, just a reminder that we do ask for respectful decorum in chambers at all times. That goes with the public and council as well. So please, Mr. Day, this would be your time to come up and address council. If you want to just push it.
Before I start speaking, do you say there's not going to be a public record of this on the Callwood website?
Sorry, can you repeat?
Is this meeting going to be available on the Callwood website?
It will be available on the Callwood website, yes.
And one following also?
It would be, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay. My, my understanding that any of the agendas are approved by the mayor. I'm disappointed that the choice to schedule both the COW meeting and council meeting for July 14th. I've never seen this done before and it seems suspicious as being done in the summer when residents are less likely to be involved. Recent developments on Chosen Road, Winthrop Road are being rushed through with only the minimum public notice. The residents have, that have spoken regarding the developments are being ignored despite their legitimate concerns. Excuses such as it's in the OCP and it would be much worse if density increased to what was specified in Bill 44 are being used to rush these developments. Bill 44 refers to the areas that are serviced by sewers. And in Callwood, these areas are represented as Callwood Sewer Specified Areas. I provided that map. Both of these excuses are not truths. Callwood Sewer Utility Bylaw states that only homes in Callwood's specified sewer use areas can be connected sewer. These development proposals are not in sewer specified areas. The development of Winthrop is being proposed with a sewer main extension into the last area to receive sewers in Callwood Septic System Conversion Plan. There's never been any capacity in Callwood Sewer Treatment Lot but for Septic Conversion or for the 2022 Development Approval of Royal Bay Royal Beach Density. Approving more development is reckless, is going to cost Callwood Sewer Users a large amount for wastewater treatment and that increase is going to be very large every year. When Callwood's capacity allocation is exceeded in three to five years and fines of three times the rate for wastewater treatment for flows above Callwood's wastewater allotment.
Council, is anybody opposed to giving Mr. Day another two minutes? Seeing nobody opposed, please carry on, Mr. Day.
Okay, I'm sorry, thank you. Approving more development is reckless, is going to cost Callwood Sewer Users a very large amount for wastewater treatment and that increase is going to be very large every year. When Callwood's capacity allocation is exceeded in three to five years and fines of three times the rate for water wastewater treatment for flows above Callwood's wastewater allotment, every home connected to sewer will see sewer user rates skyrocket. This is going to result in a crash of homeowner values for every home connected to sewer in Callwood, not to mention development. And I've gone through extensively here that for whatever reason, can't seem to find the right building on the Callwood website. Each year for 23 and 24, it was 600 units a year. You'll never find those numbers in anything that's presented. Any 2023, 2024 sewer connections are grossly misrepresented in the, in the package. I don't know how you're going to deal with it, but there's a one very good presentation. It's a bar chart and on one bar chart, it shows you that just the OCP amendment for Latoria Road, which isn't a sewer treatment area, would take up half of all of Callwood Sewer allotment, half of all of Callwood Sewer allotment. But there's another column that shows 11 million liters, a huge thing. And it says that the title for that is Callwood Sewer Allocation. It is not Callwood Sewer Allocation. It's not 11, it's 4.7. So this is what the OCP would say is it's undoable. The OCP, there should be no development outside sewer areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Day. Okay, so moving on to new business. Just something, a note for, for council, which would be helpful for me, chairing the meeting tonight, would be to ensure an efficient meeting. If we can ask questions during the presentation and to reserve any comments at the end when there's a motion on the floor, it just might help me to ensure that this meeting is smooth because I'm not always chairing, so thank you. I will let the CAO, Jason Johnson, introduce item 5.1. Thank you.
Thank you. This is under new business, section 5.1. This is Road Infrastructure Project Prioritization. This referred to Committee of the Whole by council on May 26th as a result of the development application. The recommendations for council's consideration is that council direct staff to proceed with interim safety enhancements at the Chosen Road and Lagoon Road intersection, including the installation of an LED enhanced stop sign and the regular repainting of road surface markings while awaiting the completion of the new transportation master plan. We have Mr. Joshua Bayless, our manager of engineering, who doesn't have a presentation, but will provide council with a brief overview. With that, Mr. Bayless.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Chair and Council. As you may recall, 3333 rezoning was brought to council on May 26th for first reading. Much of the conversation that night was around transportation and specifically focused around the intersection of Lagoon and Chosen. In the end, council carried a motion that directed staff to return with options for improvements at this intersection. So my hope in the report that was provided to you and the overview I'll give tonight was that we gave information around the current status of planning documents. So our transportation master plan, our Roads DCC, as well as other documentation and positioned the project or that intersection in question inside of those master planning documents. Based on this, sorry, based on those documents, the intersection of Lagoon and Chosen is not currently budgeted. It's not in our financial plan. However, it is addressed in those master, master planning documents for a future year. While not being in the financial plan, it is being monitored and watched and will certainly be represented inside of the new TMP being worked on right now with completion early next year. Moving away from positioning the project or that intersection inside of our master planning documents, we then move into potential improvements at that intersection. So the first one being full signalization today. So we have a cost estimate from our Roads DCC of just over $640,000. That was sort of ground trust in today's dollars last year. However, no detailed design has been done. It's really just the budget in order to get a DCC rate, so that work's been done. Inside of the option to signalize, do a full signalization today, there'd be significant land acquisition needs. A good portion of that would be related to the rezoning of 3333 Chosen. But the other side of the road also would require some land dedication. The other piece would be the tying into, I guess, existing infrastructure today, but then ensuring we have proper space for the future cross-section, whatever that might be, again, based on the TMP. So that wasn't the recommended solution today.
Go ahead, Counselor Day.
Thank you. So the motion that referred this back to Committee of the Whole and sought more information on this requested that suggested improvements include costings and timelines. I did not see costs or timelines other than the development cost charge list. Could you please explain why it's coming back without those?
Thank you, Counselor Day. The reason we felt touch point today and bringing this information to you was that significant effort would need to be put into the full signalization and providing a cost estimate and timing. So that is our third option and not recommended option from a staff perspective, perspective. What we are bringing forward is some minor suggested treatments that could be done at very low cost and we can speak to those and bring back the exact details. But we're talking ordered magnitude of $10,000 versus hundreds of thousands of dollars. So at the time of the meeting on the 26th and when that resolution was made, we didn't have information to know exactly what the point at which we would come back and what options would be available to us. So like I said, without spending significant effort and coming back at a later date after the summer break, we thought a touch point today to ensure, okay, is this interim solution of the LED stop sign being implemented and a refreshing of the paint surface markings, is that in alignment with what council would like to see today to get us to the end of the TMP and then look at a further investment? If not, council could then solidify that first recommendation and say, no, 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 we want you to look at the signalization or hybrid signalization, bring options and cost it. And then we would take the, you know, two, three months to get that together and bring it back to you in the fall.
Okay, and what is the benefit of the LEDs stop sign? What problem does this address? I don't see people failing to stop, so I'm just wondering how does this help?
Thank you for the question. It's exactly that. We, we do see significant rolling on that stop sign, rolling through the intersection, rolling into the crosswalk. It's not a surefire solution. It's just another one. When I can go through the list after of sort of the current standards of that intersection relative to a pedestrian crossing near a school with the crossing guards, it meets and exceeds all of our design standards. Now, could we go further and signalize it? Yes. But the geometry of the intersection, the markings on the intersection, it all either meets or very nearly meets what we would do today. So like I said, the curb and gutter and the defining of that line path for vehicles to come through meets today's standards. The line painting technically should only be parallel bars, but a higher standard would be zebra markings, which we have today. So we're trying to look at the intersection and think, what can we do to make this more apparent to people traveling and more visible to people traveling in their cars to pay attention? Because the rules of the road are there. It's stop here, wait for someone to cross. But what we're finding is people are rushing. People are making rash movements because there is a backup on, on the chosen in that storage area. Same on the lagoon coming on to the chosen. It's, it gets busy for 15, 20 minutes, 45 minutes, whatever that is in the morning and the evening. And for that short period of time each day when school's in, people are making rushed and rash decisions. So to try to enforce that even more, we can make things more visible, like the existing expectations on drivers.
Thank you.
Thank you. Joshua, I just had a couple of questions. So we don't have any, I know we don't have any costing, but we have kind of an idea of what the significant costing would cost to upgrade that intersection, but for the, for this, the road painting and the sign and that, we don't have costing. Okay. The other question I had was regards to the, I know this seems offside, but it's, it's related. The TMP, is that on, on schedule, like on? Yeah, okay.
Thank you for the question. Yeah, it is on schedule. We're deep into the public engagement, stakeholder engagement. I don't have the schedule in front of me, but Josh is the lead on that. We've been working on that closely and there's been no delays to date.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chair. I have, I had eyes on that intersection, as you mostly know, for 25 years and it's always been a tricky and dangerous and questionable intersection. We have come together with lots of people in cars and lots of people with kids going to a elementary school. I don't know that the solutions are ever going to be the best, but I appreciate the fact that you've made the effort on this. I do like the, I call it enhanced stop sign. I'm not sure if it would work. I don't know that. I've seen them. They've got one at the right turn off of Sook Road now. And I know I always, it sort of startles me and I lift my foot and it's good because that crosswalk isn't initially apparent because of the trees, et cetera. And of course, you're paying attention, it's safe, but if someone's standing there, it would be hoofing to wait till the car stops before they enter the roadway. And I see this as a similar situation. So that might be a good solution, the LED thing for now. The question I would have is when, if that, this project were approved at the corner there, the 10-unit building, would the signalization of that intersection tie in with the building of that building timeline wise? Or is that too much of a stretch to know that?
Thank you for the question. Are you referring to the 3333?
Yes, of course, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, as of now, it's, it wouldn't be tied with that timing, but that was not the plan and the TA that's been given to us by the developer and reviewed by our team. From a transportation and trip generation standpoint, it doesn't trigger the signalization by any means.
No, not even close.
But it's certainly, that development gives us further land that we require to do the signalization.
Yeah, and I saw a reference somewhere. I can't remember where, but perhaps the need to require a bit of land. Can you tell me where that is? Is that on that property side or is it on the plaza side?
The, sorry, no, not at all. The land required for the intersection, again, not fully detailed out in terms of the exact means, but we're looking for that 20-meter or 24-meter cross-section inside of Chosen. So those additional, I think it's two and a half or three meters that that developer would be dedicating to the city. The same would be dedicated on the Royal Bay Bakery and that plaza in there, once that triggers for development or if we need to acquire that land.
Right, because the road, the city right away is, I understand the property line is already well, further back than it appears.
Yes, and additional, and additional dedication is required.
Yeah, and then a little bit beyond that, okay. And that would just change the setback then for the existing plaza. Shed they've got going there, then it would impose on that setback or the setback would be shortened, I guess, would have to be. If that were true, okay.
Correct.
So there's no left-hand solution, eh? Off of the good. Despite that part, it's a bit nerve-wracking, but an odd thing has evolved in the last, I'd say, not even two years, where people actually have to slow down so much for the traffic in the school that they wait and leave the intersection empty and wave you on. And a lot of people do that, I see. And now I'm doing, I stop short, I wave buses. People wave me out and I don't wait as long now as I did a year ago at that intersection to turn left. It's interesting, but anyway, I like the proposal here and I would support that idea.
Counselor Jansen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. All these suggested treatments, I take it it's all compliant with the future TMP. We're not going to be having to remark the roadway because the lines need to look different, turning like that, I'm assuming.
Thank you for the question. No, so we don't have a standard for a high-visibility LED stop sign, but it's in compliance with design standards and all that, so that's fine. That would be removed at a full signalization, of course. And then the line painting, that's done on a, you know, annual, every two years, whatever it needs to be basis already. So what staff's suggesting is that would be refreshed more frequently to keep that visible, that more visible to the public in that area.
Thank you, and I appreciate the fact that we're looking for some solutions that are attainable and effective and timely, aside from full signalization. And quite frankly, I think the full signalization has a lot of moving parts attached to it and that's just gonna, you know, slow us down a number of months or years, quite frankly. But can I ask, we, we've got those flashing pedestrian lights at more than one location around the province. I don't see that as an option, Josh. Can you speak to that? Because it feels like that might be a good spot for that. And then that's something we can take down and reuse when it goes to signalization.
Yeah, thank you for the question. Inside of the analysis of the current standards, I put in a little piece around the rectangular rapid flashing ballers. That's what you were referring to, I'm sorry. Yes, that's the RFEs. Those are typically in places perpendicular mid-block. So you wouldn't already have a, an intersection, whether it's formalized or signaled or not. They would be, as you see them inside of Callwood, down in Royal Bay and other areas where you're crossing a main, you know, arterial or collector and the main traffic is going perpendicular to that crossing. You put in an RFB. If we put it here, the, I'm not saying there'd be no benefit, but it'd be, the benefit would actually be gained by that flashing stop sign. Because you're already having the people coming up Lagoon getting that visual aid to stop. And they already have that coming up to an intersection of a road. There's nothing, there's no crossing that we're talking about at this intersection of Chosen, which is where you would want to put an RFB to warn people because they're going through. There's no through traffic on Lagoon coming into Chosen that you have to turn right or left. So that the benefit of an RFB put in that position, that location is, it just doesn't add value.
Perfect, thank you. And I do endorse the preferred option, staff preferred option at this point in time. I think it's too early to move to signalization and I worry about congruity with future remediation of the Chosen Road and doing something twice. Thank you.
Counselor Day for a second time.
Thank you. I just, hopefully, I think you're finished your report. I'm just wondering if it's all right if I move something. The, the reason I'm concerned is the transportation master plan has had significant debate at the committee level about the size and capacity of the Chosen Road. And I, I think it would be fair to say that all members of the committee would agree that it's an important quarter and one that has lots of complications. So given that the full signalization of the Chosen Road is a development cost charge project to which all developments that are developing to use that quarter would be contributing to. I'm concerned that leapfrogging ahead with the stop sign may not, likewise concerned with looking at full signalization, just because we don't know what the ultimate road cross-section is going to look like yet and whether or not we'll be able to accommodate turning lanes, et cetera. I'm guessing that your LED illuminated stop sign, is it solar powered or you need to wire it?
Thank you for the question. Both, both are an option. We would look at a solar powered for this location being the cost. And all of this work could be done inside of our public works or through our public work. So again, we're able to control it. We can relocate that at a future date into another location. That's, those are the reasons why staff looked at these as viable options and recommended them. It's the transferability to another location, the flexibility of being able to go to full signalization and the knowledge that there's no waste there. The benefit is today and then it will continue if it gets moved somewhere else.
So I guess I'm looking for a blend, if you will, of option one and option two because I, I don't want to endorse the 2015 transportation plan for Chosen Road because I believe it's inadequate. But I do want to provide a temporary solution to at least try and see if it will help. And then, you know, if it's not helping, it can be repurposed elsewhere. So I think that makes it more attractive. But I really think it's important that we await the completion of the new transportation master plan to address the issues on the Chosen Road. So if I can make that motion that we approve the interim safety enhancements and await completion of the new transportation master plan for final lane widths, road widths, et cetera.
I think I have to let Counselor Jordan speak for a second time before we put a motion on the floor, so I'll just. Please go ahead.
I was, thank you. I was going the same way, Counselor Day, except that I, I see this as an opportunity to that council direct staff to report back with an updated timeline to have the TMP finalized no later than the end of this year. Because I, I think that this has been ongoing for too long and it's, it needs to get done. So I'd like to see if that's a feasible solution to have that back quicker. If there's a way to add that in as a friendly amendment, I'm not sure.
Let John say a few words.
Yeah. I would be concerned about trying to push it to the end of the year, mostly based on the engagement plan with the public and the stakeholders. Sometimes that can lengthen things with regards to, depending on what that engagement says and then what we need to explore with regards to options moving forward. If we wanted to significantly reduce the engagement piece from a technical stand-up standpoint, it's possible. We'd have to talk to consultants, so we could push it forward. But I would be concerned that we'd be rushing through the TMP and not giving us the proper engagement to get it done by the end of the year.
Thank you, John. Counselor Jordan, your lights on again, but before I do that, I'm gonna just, I have a few questions myself and then I will let you ask some more questions. I mean, I think that this current staff recommendation, option one, does strike a balance and does provide a temporary solution that I think that council is looking for and the community is looking for. And this would be directed to staff, but what is the current traffic count? Do we have those numbers? And at what count was it that we proposed to do upgrades to the intersection and the road to comply with the guidelines of the draft TMP and the Roads DCC bylaw?
Thank you for the question. We have sort of specific counts in those locations, but we recently got a, a map that helps with our corridors overall. So we're seeing about 11,000 trips on the chosen and then 10,000 trips just south of. And then ten thousand trips just south of the chosen after lagoon, and then lagoon is about three thousand. So that's our like order of magnitude, got check on those trips on those roads into that intersection. Relative to the project sort of triggering or what we envisioned for counts, I mean, Callwood's ever changing and the path in which people take in their vehicles change as well. So we, we sort of do these at the master planning time or for a large T I A. So we had the joint memo between the three large developers in South Callwood. I believe, and I should have wrote this down before, I think it was sixty percent build out or something along those lines was the anticipated triggering of this intersection. We've been evaluating that relative to the model and we think that we're likely going to see a technical need from just a vehicle flow standpoint sooner than that. But this new T M P is where we're going to get that sort of technical analysis mixed with the social aspect when we consider the residents and things like traffic safety in that area, the kids crossing proximity to a school, all those types of things. So it all comes and plays in. But to give you a hard and fast, you know, at fifteen thousand, we're doing it. That's, that's not exactly where we, where we land. We're trying to balance those, those different aspects. So that's, that's where we would land today.
Thank you for that. And another question, so would you say the intersection data supersedes corridor collisions as far as what's higher weighting?
No, I think we would bring that information to council with the recommendation, technical recommendation at the time. So every intersection, every corridor has its own unique characteristics. And in our new master plan, we're trying to bolster that to get the level of okay, it's intersection safety coupled with flow. So that we're not trying to get a hierarchy of one or the other. On an arterial and a major corridor, we need to think about flow, but if it becomes our highest corridor incident area, we need to then look at addressing that. But at what point does flow become more important than the other? So we're trying to bring all of the, all of those aspects at once, including land use, including all the different pieces. So I don't think we could say it's, you know, this has a two-time multiplier, point five multiplier. It's not weighted that way. It's here's the facts, here's the facts, here's the facts, here's the facts. And then we bring forward those projects through the T M P and get that last piece as well.
Thank you, Josh. But Counselor Jordanson.
Sorry, I just had one more question. Um, so with regard to the T M P, when were staff I guess directed to update that or when did that commence?
I'd have to go back and look at the exact resolution from council. I want to say twenty twenty three? Was the budgeted plan for the update on that?
I just think I think that, I think that this is a priority and it's a priority for Callidians. It's a priority for council and it has been for quite some time and I I think that the engagement with the community, they'd be right there with you, providing the engagement that, you know, to get things rolling. And I, I just think we need to make this a priority or things coming down the chosen road, it won't be able to be approved anymore because we can't keep building out a corridor without knowing what it's going to look like. It's just, it's, um, it's not a good use of taxpayer money. So my concern is that, uh, that we need to make this a priority. So, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Grove, sorry, I didn't see.
Oh, that's all right. It'll flash all day, I think. Uh, the immediate response here with the L E D enhanced stop sign, repainting the road gives us a publicly visible and an immediate response that I think will help. Already with the crossing guard, that left turn lane off lagoon was a huge improvement when it went in. The crossing guard is a huge improvement now at the peak points of congestion. And I think that the stop sign will help to slow our, yeah. It's, it's tricky. Cars pulling up there quick often roll by as they're turning right, they're looking left to see the oncoming cars and they don't even see your pedestrians. I've, I've witnessed a couple of times people jumping back off the curb as people roll through, looking left for the oncoming traffic. So I think that'll help. We can only wait to find out. It makes reference here to this quick solution, which is on the lower end of cost. While we await the completion of the new transport T M P. And I think that speaks to what we need today and, and, and just, uh, issues around the T M P is not in the scope of this particular discussion. Um, it is certainly needed, of course, but I'm really interested in just getting this quick solution to that problem, especially after we saw such a large number of people complaining about the traffic at that development. And they were speaking really to existing conditions as much as anything. So that is my opinion and I think that option one covers, thank you.
Yes, please go ahead, Jason.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Chair. The transportation master plan, we have on the regular agenda this evening, the operational plan. And what that shows you is a hundred and seventy-four different initiatives that staff are working on. The reason we're bringing that operational plan forward to council is precisely for, if you want to advance the transportation master plan and the timing within that, what does that do with some of the other things that we're working on within engineering? So it'd be appropriate at that time to think about the transportation master plan and asking staff to bring forward a report of what are the options to speed up the transportation master plan with what we've got with the existing initiatives that we've got and what would that mean if we were to prioritize that? What gets deprioritized within the existing work plans? So council can leave that component until the council discussion later this evening. Uh, this report is on that short-term interim solution and the options that were provided. So those additional details we can provide later in the meeting at the regular council meeting for the transportation master plan.
Okay. Counselor Day.
Thank you. So I'd like to move the interim safety enhancements and a report to council on moving up the new transportation master plan. And just briefly, my rationale for that is, uh, I was doing some looking at our transportation issues in Callwood. And I used the Google data that's available. And my chosen road is actually carrying more traffic than V M P. So it's, it's a very important quarter that services some of our largest developments. And I think that, um, you know, a Band-Aid is always a good thing when you have no other options. But really and truly, a, a better plan for my chosen road is needed. Thanks. That's my motivation. I've made the motion that we do the interim safety enhancements and ask staff to bring council a report on moving up the new transportation master plan.
Okay, sorry, I need to, so you're moving option one with, with an amendment?
With an amendment, sorry.
Can we, yeah, thank you. That's so helpful for me. So is the only thing changed is the, the second part, the and that staff provide a report to council on moving up the transportation master plan options for prioritization? That's the addition?
Yes.
That's the only change? Okay, I'm gonna let Counselor Jansen have another chance to speak here. Go ahead.
Why, are we at discussion, Madam Chair, on the motion?
We had a seconder, which is Counselor Jordanson, so yes.
Thank you. I was awaiting discussion. I'm not interested in watering this down whatsoever. Quite frankly, this is on point. The staff recommendation is on point. It's targeted at a particular project. I'm not interested in watering it down with ifs, ands, or buts and some murky dates. And I'd rather have staff actually work on the master transportation plan, not a report about working on the master transportation plan. And I quite frankly, don't think this is the, the item to discuss the master transportation plan. We make our feelings, I think, quite clear to staff along the way, and I'm also not interested in shortcutting in any way the master transportation plan because if we did that, this council, staff members, whomever will face criticism from some corners of this community in some form or another that we rushed it and it didn't get its suitable time period for full collaboration with anyone and everyone. So I'd like to separate the two. I won't support the motion as it's written.
Counselor Jordanson, I'm gonna give you the mic and then we're gonna call the question if there's no more discussion. Go ahead.
I'm having some trouble supporting the recommendation without what was asked for the costing and the timelines. So we are just blatantly agreeing to this recommendation without knowing the costs or the timelines involved. I, I think that's a little irresponsible.
Okay. I guess we'll call the question. So we're, for the recommendation that's on the floor now, correct? Yeah, okay. So all in favor of the recommendation that's currently on the floor in front of you? Counselor Day? And everyone, anyone opposed? Okay, so that is defeated. Um, and so we will I think I've lost here for a second. Oh, Counselor Jansen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I propose the staff recommended option. Thank you.
Okay, second invite. Counselor Grove, Counselor Day, give you the mic.
Thank you, and I know you're new to chairing, but it would be appreciated if you would let us know how you're voting.
I do that when I need to for a tie. Is that not? Oh, sorry, can you?
Yeah, so the chair cast their votes in the tie event.
In the tie event? Only in the tie, yeah? Yes, thank you. Thank you for your patience. I don't get the opportunity to chair very often council meetings.
Typically, the, at Callwood, the chair does indicate their vote. By rules, it doesn't state that one way or the other, but that's typically the way that we've carried down business here.
Okay, I will carry on doing things the way we always do. Okay, and Counselor Day had her mic.
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to the transportation master plan issue. So I think it was more than a year ago that the infrastructure committee talked about the transportation master plan. And we have been waiting idle. Not having any information to work on, not being able to provide any insights to council, not being able to bring this forward. So for me, this is a really important issue. We have had a lot of transportation-related initiatives coming forward without an overarching plan that they're adhering to. And I feel that the information that I get from the community and that I see in our community is that all of our attention is being focused on the areas that serve others and not enough on the areas that serve Callwood residents only. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Day. So we've had a seconder for the motion that's on the floor for the recommendation. Option one, thank you, Counselor Grove. So I'll call the question on that. All in posed on the staff recommendation, option number one, anyone opposed? And Counselor Days and Counselor Jordanson are opposed, all in favor. And so that motion is defeated, carried, sorry. And with that, if we can take just a brief break. You can run on your own. Okay, sorry. So we'll move on to item five point two, if I can get the C A O to introduce the item on the agenda. That would be excellent. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Chair. This is the North Latoya Corridor Pre-feasibility Study. There is a report with dependencies for councils consideration and there is a presentation. I'd also like to make mention for council that staff are limiting their presentations to a maximum of ten minutes in all of the things that we're providing to you. So we're trying to keep it on track so that we're not going more than what developer, what would happen out there. So with that, Desiree Gibbons, our planner, is here to present this along with Jasmine, our, our director of planning.
And if I, sorry, Desiree, I just wanted to mention that it is five. We've got fifteen more minutes left of our committee, the whole meeting, so I just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you. Please go ahead.
Thank you, and good, good afternoon, committee members or, I'm sorry, council. Um, so tonight's agenda or on the next, next agenda is the North Latoya Area Plan. Um, so I'll start by just giving a project update on the North Latoya Visioning Project. Following this, we'll have Corealis Consulting give a press, short presentation on the financial analysis of the revised land use concept. And then we'll end with a overview of the draft North Latoya Area Plan, which includes key highlights from the plan. So just a project update. The North Latoya Visioning Project was envisioned to be completed within four phases and would create a vision and plan for the project area as shown here on the slide. Uh, phase one included a review of the existing policies and public engagement to introduce, introduce the plan at the to introduce the project at a high level. Phase two included developing and refining land use concepts in consultation with council, the public and various stakeholders. Uh, we are now in phase three of the project, which involves transforming the final land use concept that was presented in March twenty twenty-five into a detailed area plan, uh, which is now presented to you for your first round of review, review. In phase four, we are anticipating that feedback from tonight's meeting and from the Planning and Land Use Committee meeting last week will be incorporated into the area plan. And then we are anticipating a public hearing and adoption process in the fall. Um, so at this time, I will pass it over to Blair Urb from Corealis Consulting. He is joining us virtually and he'll be presenting the next few slides here to summarize the results of the preliminary financial analysis over to you, Blair.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay, perfect. Hi, Chair and Council. My name is Blair Urb, as Desiree mentioned. Thanks for allowing me to present some slides this evening. I'll keep it brief. Our firm does a lot of financial and economic analysis for local government to help inform municipal development policy. So in this case, we were asked to take a, a look at the draft North Latoya Area Plan from a, from a financial perspective. So the scope of our work was to evaluate the financial viability of new apartment development in the area and help determine if new projects that proceed in the future can support what's called a density bonus contribution as part of the development approvals process, in addition to providing some other items which the city is seeking. Land dedication for creeks and riparian areas is a, a major contribution required. Also for roads, onsite roads, land dedication, your development cost charges and your current amenity contributions. Next slide, please. Thanks. So just a quick overview on development economics to help you follow perhaps some of the things that I'm going to be presenting. The, the fundamental thing to keep in mind is that in order for a development project to go ahead, the development and their lenders need to assume it's going to generate a sufficient profit. the development and their lenders need to assume it's going to generate a sufficient profit to proceed. Otherwise, projects don't go ahead. In terms of vocabulary, some people talk about profit just in terms of dollars. But often it's expressed as what's called a margin, which I'm going to present shortly. So a profit margin is simply the, the total profit generated by the project divided by the project costs. So it's a percentage. And in order to obtain financing and proceed with a project, most lenders expect the development to be targeting a profit margin of, of at least 15% on total project costs. Next slide, please. This, I thought, would just help illustrate a few items that we were looking at. So what I've done here is put up three very simple scenarios that are all hypothetical. They're not real numbers that are used in our analysis. They're just for to tell a story. And the three scenarios are scenario one, which is the first column, is, is a pro forma, a very simplified financial pro forma that assumes a developer is building 100 apartment units. Number two assumes that they get additional rights to build 150 apartment units. And then the third one is like scenario two where we assume the developer has, has the extra units at 150. But they're expected to give what's called a density bonus contribution in order to get those extra units. So I'll just try to quickly walk through this because I know we're pressed for time. Scenario one, what we're showing here is that we assume that when the project's completed, that it's worth about $55 million. That's 100 units at $550,000 per unit. Get to your 55 million. From that, we then deduct a bunch of costs. So there's things like commissions that would go to the, the marketing agents. There's the land costs, which we got in at 3 million just for illustrative purposes. Your current amenity contributions would total $600,000 on a 100-unit project. We haven't put in a density bonus contribution in this scenario one. And then all of the other project costs, which are the lion's share, which are, you know, the construction costs and the consultants and financing and things along that lines. At about 440,000 per unit, which is $44 million. So if you take the value and you subtract those costs, you get the profit, which in this case is 6.3 million. That's a little under 13% profit margin. And as I just mentioned, most developers have a tough time proceeding if they're not getting to about 15%. So scenario two just assumes that there's an extra 50 units on the exact same site. And so all of the following revenues and costs go up proportionately. So we're just keeping it simple. And in this, you can see that at the bottom, the profit's gone up. The, the cost of the project has also gone up because it's bigger. And we're a little north of 15% on the profit margin. So it's showing that the extra density improves the profitability of the project and ought to allow the developer to go ahead. The third scenario is just like number two, but if you look about two thirds of the way down, we've layered in a $5,000 per unit bonus density contribution, which totals $750,000 in this example. And then what that does is it pushes down the profit because it's an extra cost. And now we're down to about a 14% profit margin. So we've dipped below that target viability threshold. Next slide, please. And so this is just simply showing that increased density can improve the profitability and the viability of a project. And it can also lead to increased amenity contributions for the municipality because your, your contributions are based on a per unit basis. But if we look for a density bonus contribution, as shown in that third scenario, it, it may reduce the profitability of the project and impair the viability. Next slide, please. So for North Latoria to, to analyze those issues that I just outlined, we picked two of the sites in the area. And we, we picked two that have different characteristics in terms of the land dedication that's going to be required for creek preservation and protection. So we picked a site that will lose about 20% of its land for riparian protection and another site that's going to lose about 25%. Those are kind of indicative of a typical sites in the area. They're all a little bit different in terms of the land dedications that are needed. And then on each of those sites, we analyzed apartment development at 1.75 F A R and also at 2.5 F A R. And we did both of those as condominium projects and then secondly as rental projects. And so then we evaluated the profitability and the viability of each of those scenarios. Next slide, please. And this shows just the output of our analysis. So, so the top, the top table summarizes the profit margins for the different scenarios that we ran. And the bottom table flags whether or not we would characterize it as a, as a viable development candidate or not. And, and the, the, the first columns are for the condominium or the strata, the strata scenarios. And so you can see that there's a different profit margin between the two sites because site two has to give away more of its property for land dedication. So it's, it's a bit more challenging on site two. But site one hits about a 15% profit margin at the full 2.5 F A R. And site two is getting close, but not quite there at the 2.5. For rental, the rental site, the rental scenarios do a little bit worse. They're, they're still profitable, but they're, they're achieving a lower profitability than the condominium scenarios. So in that bottom box, you can see out of the eight apartment scenarios we ran. One is viable. That's at the 2.5 F A R condominium. And four are pretty close. We've called them possibly. So, so they may go ahead at the 2.5, less likely at the 1.75 F A R. And three of them are going to likely have difficulties proceeding, particularly the, the rental schemes at the 1.75 F A R. Last slide, please.
Sorry, if I can. Sorry, just we do have a Counselor Day who has a question.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I can't see anybody.
And I, and I, my apologies. I was ahead of my, by like an hour when I said that.
Oh, okay.
I was completely incorrect.
Thank goodness. Sorry, I was moving a little quicker because I thought we were running out of time. Okay.
I'm gonna let Counselor Day ask her question. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm just trying to understand. Can we go back to the previous slide? So you're comparing a site that has a larger portion of land to be dedicated because there's creek implications. And one that has less land that's required to be dedicated. But I'm just trying to understand the purpose of this comparison. Because the, I would imagine the developers purchased the land being fully aware where, what percentage of the land had creek on it. So are you suggesting that the citizens of Colwood should compensate the site developer for having purchased a site with more creek area?
Yeah, thanks for the question, Counselor. Nope, I'm not suggesting that whatsoever. What we've assumed is that the developer pays for the site based on what it's worth under its existing zoning and existing use. So they, they have to pay the current property owner, the market value for their property, just to keep it as is. And so with that as an assumption, the developer can't pay any less for, for the land than we've assumed. They could always pay more if they chose to, but they, they can't pay less than what it's worth to the current property owner under its current.
But we're not looking at real costs because most of these sites have been acquired at very much a lower cost than because they had different zoning on them.
Correct. So our analysis assumes that the acquisition cost would be the lower cost based on the current zoning. And some of the sites have sold and some of them have not. So every site will be a little bit different from that perspective. And with different land acquisition costs depending on what each individual developer can negotiate with the, the current property owner.
Thank you. And there's just one other factor that hasn't been considered, and that is having a creek on the property may actually enhance the value of the finished product.
So the, the two sites that we looked at have the, will have the creek running along the front of the property, I would call it, along Latoria Road. And we don't know what the, the final design and appearance of that will be, but we've assumed that it's a a marketable feature that does improve the ability to rent or, or sell any new units at the site. There, there are one or two sites that have the creek also running, I guess, north, south. I might, might have my directions wrong there. So there would be creek running around long, well, through the property, so to speak. And those ones will, you know, it's nice to have the creek running through it, but it will severely limit the amount of new development that can fit on those properties due to the setbacks in two different directions.
Great. But your, your summary of findings does not include anything about the benefits of the creek, only the costs.
Yeah, sure. So the, yeah, fair enough, but it's implied in our analysis. So this is just a summary. So yes, we've assumed that the creek is a, a feature which helps market the units at the site.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please continue with the presentation.
Okay. And so this was the last slide, and, and I know I ran through that quickly. So, but the, the key implications of the work that we've done are that our work shows that the viability of new apartment development at 1.75 F A R is going to be what I would call marginal or extremely challenging. We would, we would not expect many projects to go ahead under current market conditions at, at that density. At the 2.5 F A R, which we also tested, projects will be much closer in most cases to being viable, still difficult, but much more likely to proceed. And, and the reasons for that is even, even with the extra density, as mentioned, there's still the requirement to dedicate a significant portion of most of these sites for creek enhancement. There's a requirement for the existing amenity contributions to be paid in addition to the land dedications. And you, you may know, or you may be aware that it's just, it's generally becoming a difficult real estate market for new development projects due to market conditions right now. So our work's showing that it's not financially feasible for the city to seek bonus density contributions in addition to the C A Cs and the D C Cs that will be charged and, and the land dedications that are being sought. And that was it for my slides.
Thank you, Blair. Just before we move on, are there any questions from council about the preliminary financial analysis?
Thank you, Desiree. I'm sure we have questions. Sorry?
My questions are on the report, Council, not on the presentation.
Not sure.
Desiree's report?
Yes.
It's on the agenda. That's what my questions are.
Oh, okay. And I will do.
Thank you, Desiree. Can you tell us what the? Remind me, please, the North Latoria, what is the range for the F A R, anticipated F A R? I just don't remember. Is it from the 1.75 to the 2.5? Is that why we're seeing this, these numbers?
Thank you for the question through the chair. I guess the revised land use concept does support a 2.5 F A R, no longer 1.75. I do have more to my presentation. I just wanted to pause to see if there's any questions about the preliminary financial analysis, but I can continue on.
I'll yield your worship, your acting worship.
So everyone, okay. Yeah, please, please continue, Desiree. Thank you.
Thank you. So after we've completed the print natural analysis from Coriolis, we went back and revised the land use concept based off of what we heard and I, we started preparing an North Victoria area plan, which I'll present to you on the next few slides here. So just a copy of the plan is provided in your agenda package. It was prepared by staff and consultation with, or based off of the feedback that we have heard throughout the first two phases of the project. Engagement with landlords, stakeholders and the public informs the vision statement, goals and and policies that you'll see on the next few slides. And I'll just highlight some of the the key items from this plan. And the goal of tonight's meeting is to seek feedback from council on the draft plan. Any feedback that you receive tonight will inform updates to the plan before we return for August 25th for endorsement. So starting with the vision statement here, I just paraphrased it. It's just says that the North Victoria corridor will support balanced growth with diverse housing, green space and infrastructure while protecting Latoria Creek and enhancing connectivity to nearby areas. The goals of the draft plan reflect what we heard throughout the engagement and include broader city priorities. They include protecting and enhancing the natural environment. Enhancing ecological habitat by requiring green space and soft landscaping. Encouraging the provision of active transportation facilities. Enabling a diverse range of land uses in order to support nearby commercial hubs in Royal Bay and Olympic View. Improving the function and performance of Latoria Road as an arterial road that safely accommodates multimodal movements. And ensuring that infrastructure master planning considers any necessary improvements to accommodate the growth that is anticipated. To realize the vision statement and to achieve the goals of the plan, the plan includes several policies which are intended to guide development within this area. With respect to implementation, the plan is envisioned to be completed through a series of different phases, which will be defined through future rezoning applications. A part of this, to secure the phasing, we're recommending that applicants enter into development agreement with the city at the time of rezoning. And then here is the revised land use concept. So based off of Blair's findings, we have revised land use concept to remove the density bonusing framework from it. As now, instead of having a base density of four stories and 1.75 F A R and a bonus density of 2.5 and six stories, this has been amended to just permit an outright maximum height of six stories and 2.5 F A R. But in general, the land use concept shows the, the existing natural features and important areas to be protected, including riparian area, tree canopy, as well as the the envisioned accesses into the development. So with respect to the built forum and land use policies in order to support a coordinated and holistic approach to development in the corridor, applications that include at least two contiguous lots must be, hopefully the only ones that are supported. So any single application, single property applications will not be supported. And this is to help ensure that the amenities and infrastructure that are envisioned by this plan are able to be delivered in a timely and efficient manner. In addition, we have a policy included that requires the buildings to be sited in order to preserve the existing tree canopy and to minimize the impacts to the natural features. With respect to housing, we are targeting 20% of the total units to be provided for the purpose of addressing a key area of local need such as affordable housing, rental housing, family housing, accessible housing and housing for seniors. To secure these, or to secure these housing types in the long term, all developments or rezonings that come forward will be required to enter into a housing agreement to secure those housing types for a minimum of no, for a minimum of 20 years. So with respect to green space, the plan sets the following green space buffer targets in order to protect riparian features and integrate open spaces throughout the neighborhood. Along the south border of the project area, we are anticipating that the Latoria Road frontage will be preserved as green space and that land adjacent to the creek will be transferred over to the city. For the North Latoria Creek that runs north, south, we are anticipating that the For the North La Toria Creek that runs north, south, uh we are anticipating that the stream side protection and enhancement area of this creek. Will be preserved as green space, this area is to be determined by the project qualified environmental professional. At the at the development permit stage, but it can range anywhere from ten to eighteen uh meters on either side of the creek. Um development of the North La Toria, North La Toria Corridor must follow set adaptive planning policies and. A policy has been included within the area plan to ensure this. Applicants will be required to transfer land over to the city in order to support future efforts to restore La Toria Creek. And potentially to realign it if desired by council. Um and. Part of uh this is also ensuring that the city's parks, D C Cs will be able to support any proposed restoration efforts to La Toria Creek. With respect to tree preservation, we've heard throughout the visioning process that the protection and retention of mature tree canopy is a priority for the community. So the plan includes um policies to ensure that the. Uh the existing tree canopy is preserved and that applicants are aiming to try to preserve at least one third of the existing trees on their lands. For the transportation policies, uh most of the policies within the plan focus on improving multimodal connections. Uh road dedications and improvements will be secured through the development process. Um we are, we are pre- prioritizing adequate connection and access to public transit and. Uh importantly, the plan requires all existing accesses onto La Toria Road to be consolidated. As generally shown within the land use concept, um no other accesses will be permitted unless other options, unless all other options have been exhausted. And the plan also looks to create a continuous pedestrian and cycling network within the public rights of ways as well as on private lands. So just in terms of the next steps, following tonight's meeting, we'll return to council in August, on August twenty fifth. Um for endorsement of the area plan, and following this, there will be first and second reading, I'm sorry, is there a question?
We want to. I think she's just about done, so if that's okay, we'll let Desiree finish and then we'll go, yeah, please carry on.
Thank you, uh so then following this, we'll return for first and second reading the same night, uh public hearing. On September twenty fifth with some public consultation in between those two dates, so that'll include. Uh posting this area plan on the Let's Talk Callwood page and sending the plan out for. Uh referrals to external agencies and stakeholders for review and their input, and then we're anticipating third reading and adoption in October. That's everything, thank you so much for listening, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have now.
Thank you for the presentation, Desiree. Counselor Day.
Thank you, so um you highlighted in your presentation uh tree retention. But when you show us the numbers, you're retaining thirty percent, one third, less than half. So why is that described as retaining the trees?
Thank you for the question, Council Day and through the chair. Uh so one third we consider to be a substantial amount of tree preservation compared to other development sites, I think this is a. It's the number that strikes the right balance in between permitting. Trying to. I guess, uh support development and ensure that the um. Plans are going to be financially viable, but also hearing from the committee and. Uh I should note that the trees that we are seeking to preserve don't include that La Toria Road frontage, so that entire parcel along the La Toria Road. Um none of the trees will be removed from the from the city owned lands, it'll just be the one, that one third of the trees will be preserved on. The individual development sites, so while it will look like thirty three percent. On site, in total, it's likely to be more like half the trees because we aren't counting the trees that are within the city lands.
Okay, and uh I have a copy of the engineering and materials testing report from Rise Up Geotechnical. Uh regarding thirty five eighty four Wishart Road, which is included in the North La Toria area. Um at the corner of Wishart and La Toria. And this report clearly outlines that. Um there are some major problems and that without major work and further investigation. Um it would be unreasonable to consider that land for development. Um I'd just like to ask why that was not shared with council and why you're still continuing. To include that land in the North La Toria Corridor.
Through the chair to Counselor Day, so this particular geotechnical report was part of a development permit submission. Specific to the site. Um a local area planning exercise speaks to objectives, policies and goals set by the city. To guide development at a high level. The um due diligence that every property owner needs to take to understand. The cost implication of developing property that they own, it's on them. And it is a requirement of development permit and building permit submissions that they submit. Studies to comply with requirements. Um the it is very likely that every specific lot within the corridor will have different geotechnical considerations constraints. And it is about um. Each developer being aware of what it will take to make those lands developable. It is. About an engineering solution and the cost implication of those solutions, but it's certainly not. And developable, so to speak, there's always um solutions to address. Uh geotechnical constraints, some of them which may be more costly than others. But that is the due diligence of the property owner, the city is providing regulations, policies intent. For what we would like to see along the corridor, and then it will be up to um property owners. Property owners to. Meet the vision and propose um. Development that meets that vision and also is technically sound and meets uh requirements at building permit and development permit.
So the floodplain that that area is in. Uh was identified on our local area plans and in our O C P previously. And then um you know, has changed over the years. Yeah, I'm just trying to understand why there are no special requirements for the floodplain.
So the official community plan includes um a specific section that deals with um. Flooding or hazard lands, we call it is the development permit for hazard lands. There is work that needs to be done to our hazard lands development permit for sure to update and fine tune the language. However, we do have requirements for hazard lands, the development and the requirements that need to be in place. At the moment, if the local area plan goes ahead. Vastly, the majority of that floodplain will be a land transfer to the city, so this is the thirty meter swath. Along the La Toria Corridor that we would take as a land transfer that we've been um speaking to. Um and. Lot the the proposals will consider if these flat plain requirement. Is impacting land beyond that thirty meter um land take that we are. Fully expecting to take control over. Um then the developer will of course respond to those requirements and adjust their design accordingly. But we anticipate that the vast majority of the land that is impacted and there are current flood regulations which stipulate a flood construction level. Um I would have to pull the section on the O C P, but it it speaks to properties that fall within. A specific four meters geodetic um above sea level, there's there's a criteria in the O C P.
Yes, I understand that, I'm concerned though, um when you're saying that. Uh simply gifting um the creek area to the city. Would resolve the issue because development uh uh thirty five eighty Wishart. On caused problems on the neighboring property as well. Uh which is also detailed in the report, along with a a lack of details as far as. Proper record keeping of what has been done on that site, so I'm just very concerned about the liability. That the city may end up taking on. Um uh so. I've also got with me a copy of the sanitary sewer master plan and the septic conversion. Uh data. And the North La Toria Corridor is not included in the sewer dedicated lines. And um. Given that we have future limitations on our sewer availability. Uh I think it's a question of. Uh where we would like to see the density and call would go. Um you're talking about developing uh basically a greenfield site for most of North La Toria. Uh which may in fact um negatively impact the development of lands, say in Royal Bay or Royal Beach. Could you please explain why you're bringing this forward instead of uh sticking to the plan?
So uh there was a twenty twelve council resolution that directed staff for decades now. To look at this corridor and the potential of this corridor to connect Olympic View, a master plan community with another, like two major master plan communities. Further council resolution have reinforced that desire to guide development on this corridor and back in twenty twenty. One to twenty twenty two, we received, um we started conversations, the lands. Within the corridor have recently changed hands, so there are currently only two or three. Owners out of the thirteen lots that are longstanding um property owners, the vast majority of the lots have transferred to um. Organizations that are looking to develop. Uh the lands, and so it is, we have zoning applications, active zoning applications that are wishing to act. On the existing official community plan designation. That we are bringing forward either for you to consider under the existing land use designation of neighborhood hillside. Because we don't think the neighborhood hillside entirely addresses the. Desires of the community along the corridor. Council directed us two, three years ago to undertake. Uh review of the conditions of the corridor, what are the aspirations and the goals of the community so that we can guide development? In a way that is uh more beneficial and achieves more of the community's objectives. Than the current land use plan designation under the hillside, so we are here because we have a council resolution to advance a local area plan. That was um. Driven by development uh activity in the area.
But that council directive was done in the absence of receiving. Any information about the geotechnical issues at thirty five meter. And it was also done in the absence of any understanding of the limitations for sewer services, so. I guess I'm asking from a planning perspective. Um given that we have some limitations that we need to live within. Uh is it better to develop a green space? Or is it better to build in a a brownfield site like the mind of trouble pet? So I'm just, I'm wondering why we're not looking at a comparison uh of what our choices are.
So the choices of development are dictated, so the official community plan. Already. Allows people to come forward to council and ask them to consider. Rezoning and O C P amendments that align with the community vision. These applicants came forward to ask council to consider development of six stories under the hillside designation. The hillside designation currently, it's not, is it a good, appropriate, best location? It's, there are people that own these lands that want to. Uh propose development that meets the expectation of the official community plan. We feel like the expectations in the community plan need to be updated. To reflect a more wholesome twenty twenty five approach to the corridor. That would prioritize green space, ecological, environmental restoration, active mobility. And that would speak to elements that we now know the community values in this corridor. In absence of this local area plan, all that the community plan contains is a neighborhood hillside. A neighborhood center or a neighborhood designation, we do not believe those current tools allow us to leverage. A vision that is grander than currently stated in the document. Why is um that six stories are currently enabled in the O C P? That has been a designation that predates the twenty eighteen official community plan. It's it's um uh it's an evolution of the plan, the twenty eighteen O C P. Has this caveat of consideration for up to six story apartment buildings, three story townhomes are certainly. A longstanding transitional use from what is existing in those lands. So I don't don't, the conversation is not why here, not there, it's about. The official community plan already foresees. Population growth and change within this corridor, and it's about how to guide it to be something that is. Um providing the community the benefits that we think should be prioritized today versus the twenty eighteen vision.
So um it just, there's a lot of things in the official community plan, um as I'm sure you know. Uh and one of the things that was in there was uh that it was gentle in fill. And so this area becoming uh hillside shoreline, six story apartment blocks. Is not a very comfortable fit next to the older community, uh I'm just curious why. The other parts of the O C P are not being considered here. Um it only uh the development is being considered.
Thank you, Council Day for the question and through the chair. Um so we are not considering gentle and full and uh three stories because the financial analysis that we represented. States that two point five floor area ratio is even challenging and one point two floor area ratio is um. Very challenging, so when you calculate um floor area ratio, it's based off of the total. Um lot area and with the land dedication that we were asking for, the land transfer that we're asking for. Along the frontage as well as the creek preservation, it pushes the um. Buildable area into a smaller chunk of land, and so. When you're doing that, the only option is to go up to six stories um in order to permit that two point five floor area ratio. Uh the other option would be to allow them to expand to be um. I I just, I don't think that's um feasible because of the riparian setbacks, so I think in order to. Achieve the um goals of preserving La Toria Creek while also um. Permitting the density that the financial analysis indicates is financially viable. Six stories, I think, is the answer and why we're not um respecting the gentle and full policies.
Yeah, I think that's flawed in that you're not taking into account what was actually paid for the lands. You know, the the some of those lands of two and a half acres were bought for less than a million dollars. So yeah, I think that uh it's very important to balance our future needs. That's what I thought the purpose of a planning department was. And since we're going to experience some limitations, I would far prefer to see the full buildout of Royal Bay. Than to see. Than to see uh the further development of the Latoria corridor. Thank you. Okay, Counselor Jordanson.
Thank you. Um I just had some, I just had a question. So with the Latoria, with this area, the North Latoria corridor. Is it not, it's two uh sections, it's a neighborhood center as well as a neighborhood hillside shoreline. Is that right? It's it's both, it's half and half or.
Uh yes, through the chair. So there's a around the uh Veterans Memorial Parkway and Latoria Corridor corner. It's a neighborhood center hub uh that extends four hundred meters, eight hundred meters out of that. Four hundred meters out of that intersection, all the lots that touch that four hundred radius are neighborhood center. And then we have neighborhood hillside and neighborhood. So we have three different land use designations that stretch throughout the corridor.
So correct me if I'm wrong, but the far for, the far that we're discussing going from one seven five to two point five. Is a neighborhood center not a far of, or sorry, uh the hillside shoreline not a far of one point two?
That is correct. And and that's why we're bringing the financial analysis to prove out to you that. That F A R is too constricting for development to occur. And for us to be able to leverage. Um if we want to cluster development. And to protect thirty three percent of the tree canopy and we have built those constraints and expectations of the land. The way in which the land is to be developed, then at one point um to F A R at one point. Um it's too low, like two point five um and six stories seems to be. Where the mark margin, profit margin in today's market is.
I just think it's important to represent it as it is. It's um part of it's one point two, one part of it's one point seven five. It's not like we're just taking it from one point seven five to two point five. But uh I guess what I'm seeing is this is an O C P amendment that increases density into a neighborhood that. Was never intended to be part of an intended growth area and it's it's being written for a maximum density, which is beyond what it was originally. Intended for in the O C P. Um and I guess my big concern is the established neighborhoods that are not being considered within these plans. To build this type of density uh about it right up to them. Uh this project is, you know, it has prime examples of six stories and I've, we've even received a letter suggesting it could be eight. Um and that uh, you know, and 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 that we suggestions of replanting trees instead of um keeping with the the canopy that was. Uh you know, prescribed. Um you know, I think this is, this is a repairing an area that runs through here and uh. When there are environmental concerns and a tree canopy that's been identified, all these things need to be respected. And I guess my last question is uh with the city taking back the land for the purpose of moving the creek. I'd like to understand fully what that financial cost of that project would be. Because uh besides the parks D C Cs that are being collected, how do we know much of that's going to cost and to move? And or if we even can, or the financial estimate, we have no idea and the city is going to assume financial risk without having a cost estimate. That's uh, that concerns me.
So through the chair, so not, nothing in this plan predicates the moving of the creek as an outright decision. It allows us to take control over a buffer around the existing creek. For a potential and future relocation and enhancement, if that were to be a decision of council. It is not today's decision. It is not a decision that we are um asking council to settle. Uh as part of this plan, we are asking, we have gone to the community and understand that there's a. Very deep desire for us to maintain the green buffer that this corridor provides to the community. The best way for the city to ensure that this green buffer will be continuing is for us to take over a sizable. Uh parcel of land that is contiguous and that will be on our um control. To determine whether we just naturalize it, treat it as par, keep it, um no changes. No road needs to be expanded, no creek needs to be moved. But this plan delivers on the expectation of the community to create a sizable green space buffer. That maintains some of that um rural feel along the edge of the road. Um we do recognize these are residentially zoned lands that will develop and the development will take. Um a format that is not the original format of one home in a large parcel of land. But we want to uh respect and recognize the desire of the community for further connection, green space. And the best way that we can provide that certainty is through a land transfer to lands that are managed and owned by the city. So this is the the decision that we're asking for when we ask for support for the North Latoria Corridor. It's about the big objectives and policy expectations about a land transfer, about connectivity, about enabling. Environmental um stewardship of the creek in its current location, in a future location. It allows flexibility into the future for meeting different needs and um different budgets or expectations that council may have. So we don't need to have all um a budgeted plan for how to do X, Y, or Z. I think the time will tell where that land, what the requirements of that land will be.
Thank you. Um Counselor Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh just a few questions here. Um first off. The creek, lots of discussion around the creek. Uh there was discussion at committee around the creek as well. But uh what is the difference between this thirty meter dedication and the actual provincial identified riparian area in meters? It's like fourteen or sixteen or something like that from the creek hedge? I can't remember.
Yeah, I think I might have to give this one to the C R. I mean, the specifics are, so we want a thirty meter buffer. Um we know the experience that we've had at the corner in relocating and making room for the creek at the corner of. Um Veterans Memorial Parkway in Latoria, we needed a fifteen store, like fifteen meter buffer. Um to either side and the channel of the creek needed to have been widened by three meters. So there there was, there was ample um room for us to complete an enhancement of that ecosystem. So we are being generous in our land take, as we say, when we engage with the province at a high level. Because we're not allowed to plan on behalf of lands that we don't control. But at a high level, it is, any development within thirty meters of a creek requires a permit and review by the province. And so that thirty meter is the um. That area that triggers review by the province and the that distance and buffer gets assessed on a as needed basis. Once a review is triggered.
And it's not quite where I'm going, but I guess my point is, at committee, we heard a presentation on behalf of the developer and it was pitched that, uh you know. Um the thirty meter ask is a lot and uh it should be. You know, at least taken into account as far as the uh amenity contributions on on that side of the ledger. And I I thought about that and the reality is that the creek is there. And so there's a provincial riparian area that's there. So I'm trying to find, understand what that that difference is. Which really is what we're talking about as far as an amenity, not thirty meters. It keeps, it keeps being thrown around as thirty meters. That's thirty meters inclusive. Of the provincial riparian area and the creek itself. I'm quite sure we don't have exact numbers, but I I mentioned that as as something that 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 uh, go ahead, Desiree.
Certainly. So I believe the existing uh stream side protection and enhancement area for Latoria Creek varies anywhere from five to ten meters on either side of the creek. But that's um taking into account where it's currently located. Uh if council were to decide to move forward with the realignment of the creek to bring it further away from the road. Uh we would need an additional, um it would likely be um anywhere from ten to fifteen meters. I believe um the current, like based off of the Q E Ps report, the current speed is based off of the uh creek being kind of like a. Classified as a roadside ditch. But um if it were to be restored into something greater and um have, be able to support um fish. And uh be brought into natural um proper functioning condition. Uh that speed might increase. So that's why we're asking for that thirty thirty meters in order to give us more, but it is five to ten meters um from the existing creek location.
I guess uh uh we're here with a report talking about developer profits. So I'm trying to gain an understanding. I understand the theory of the creek and I understand how we're applying it. I understand where we're going. I get all that. I'm trying to understand that margin in between what is required versus what we're asking for. And uh respecting the fact that, you know, the developer has to contribute that because we're asking for it. Um so I'm going to circle back a little bit here. Um and I did ask this question at committee about what, if the creek never moves. Um we have this contribution uh and presumably it just becomes green space for the city or something along the way. Is my recollection correct?
Yes, I think maybe I I feel like I understand where you're going. So maybe I will offer some insights. So Suk Road, for instance. Suk Road, where we have no creek component, but we already enable in some of those lots, six story apartment buildings. We levy the same uh community amenity contributions and development cost charges. On units on Veterans Memorial Parkway in Suk than we would on this Latoria corridor. The the conditions of the Latoria corridor are such that there is um a rock formation at the rear. There is an expectation of retaining thirty three percent of the trees on site. And there are um legitimate constraints on the frontage because of the location of the creek. So these uh particular lots are very constrained. And every unit within the corridor is providing the same amount of amenities as units. That have not provided an environmental benefit, let's say, an environmental ecological. Benefit to the city, let's say, on a lot on Suk Road. And so what we're asking for here with the additional dedication. It it's impactful because it changes the F A R calculation. It's because in on Suk Road, we are not taking thirty meters of the frontage. They are still able to achieve two point five F A R on the entire lot size. And here we are asking them to pay the exact same contributions and uh. For better or worse, give us a a large component of their lot for environmental purposes. And it's. It's just recognizing that not every, the the ability for us to continue to extract. Uh community amenity contributions and D C C charges um. Hits a wall when we impose all their requirements that we have in in other sites like Suk Road. For instance, where we're not telling them preserve thirty percent of the lots of the trees on your property and whatnot.
Thank you. And I love that explanation. I guess my point is, I sit here and I read through this again today and we're going through it now and I try to find myself. Like, you know, why do I care uh about the profitability side? The profitability is not one of the boxes I check in taking a decision. But this, now going through this exercise and reading this and gaining understanding on the why, um I like that. I I like having that in the back of my mind. Um again, I'm not sure how much of an impact it will have on my decision taking because. I'm here to represent the city. One thing I didn't see in all this and I made a note to myself. Nothing in in the literature that's been presented to us there talks about a buy and hold strategy waiting for differential and market conditions. So again, as Counselor Day alluded, that uh if uh if a parcel was bought for at a discounted rate. And the plan, and it's been purchased outright and there's no holding costs. Other than, you know, there's some rent to be collected obviously for a couple of houses. And uh and then we sit on it for ten years, we wait for the building materials to bottom out. And lots of tradespeople to be uh available uh at a discounted rate. And then we've given all this uh F A R or this um two point five F A R and uh, you know, in essence. We shortchanged the city in my mind. That's more of a statement, but do you have any thoughts on on that?
I will let Larry comment since he is the expert.
Sure. Uh thanks for the observation, Counselor. I mean, you you raise good points. I would, I would say that um. You know, you're trying to make a decision about city policy today and the world will be different in the future. Um and I I think all I can say is like from a, from a, a big picture. That's the case with probably almost every decision you have to make. You know, the the world will be different when when things are implemented. Um for for the financial feasibility piece that we're doing, it is based on today's market. And so if the, if the market's better in the future, then developers may not need as much um density as as our work is suggesting. Um now, now it could go in the opposite direction though as well for for all anybody knows. And people, um when they observe real estate trends, it's really easy to observe the sales price side of something. Well, the price is higher, the developer must be doing better. But the second part of it is the costs, right? And there's a lot less attention paid to that um amongst the general public, I guess I would say. And so when when prices are rising, unfortunately, um the history in this part of the world suggests that construction costs are often also rising simultaneously. So you don't necessarily end up um further ahead a- as the developer is all I can say. And I'm not, I'm not trying to be an apologist for the development community. I'm just, I'm just telling you what we, what we see. So I I hope that's useful.
Thank you. And I I again, I I mean, people are buying these lots and they've done their due diligence and they have their buildings full of people doing the economics on this. So you know, I find it difficult to really be swayed uh uh on the financial side. Uh you know, I am here. For the citizens and for the trees and for the uh the the creek, the creek. And quite frankly, um you know. So uh having said all that, uh the part I do like is the reason I got involved in politics because of our two big holes that were in the ground historically in this community, which were failed projects. And there's nothing that annoys me more than to see everybody put a whole bunch of work into the zoning and away we go and a permit is issued. And then a project flops. So that's why I I uh I I I find this instructive. Uh Madam Chair, I just wonder if we can hear from staff to uh, there's been statements made about sewer and capacity. And I wonder in a concise manner, given the clock, if Mr. Rosenberg can uh brief us once again. I think he he hit the mark on uh at committee as far as sewer capacity in the future and what that looks like, just for clarity's sake.
Please go ahead, John. And then after you're done, I'm gonna allow uh Counselor.
I'll yield now. Madam Chair, I'll yield first.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh just, at committee, we just talked about our allocation and our current uh level of allocations at sixty two percent, which is. Uh just about the lowest of all the municipalities. And we have several municipalities that are extremely higher than us. And are uh in the case of Langford, for instance, they're well into their seventy percent of allocation, growing somewhat faster than us. So from a staff perspective, we're likely to see that um other municipalities will have the same issues that we're having, but they'll have it sooner. So the C R D is working on uh taking care of this treatment capacity. They've got a uh an extra eighteen megaliters that'll come on board with the existing plant. And then future development was regards to when it comes on. So. The city anticipates that at some point we'll need more for sure as we grow, as will other municipalities and the C R D recognizes that. And there's, there's a plan moving forward. Um it certainly is not tried and true like this is the plan, but it can be uh taken care of in the future. And really what remains is the cost to do that and those numbers are still being worked out. taken care of in the future and really what remains is the cost to do that and those numbers are still being worked out.
Thank you, John. Um, I am going to recognizing that Counselor Grove hasn't spoken yet.
I think that's great. Uh, boy, there's lots of going on here and we could talk for another hour, I'm afraid, but along Latoria Road, it's a rough piece of dirt and it needs to be enhanced to handle the growth. But we heard earlier that Mochus Road gets more traffic than B M P and I could be a function of the condition of Latoria. So we ought to pay to widen it. And I think that the development in that area is presumably a certain amount of the money that's going to be needed to do that work. I don't even have a question right now because of the time and because there's so much going on, but one of the things that I thought was the most important for this area plan to be developed is that Latoria Creek is basically a sick ditch. And we have an opportunity to bring it to life, enhance it, create a living area for folks that we can all enjoy to some degree. And I like that. If that density required to go six stories is what is needed, and I'm not saying I believe it is, or I've heard everything today and it's, I'm conflicted like some of the others. But if it is, it seems to me to be the way to go. The option would be to leave it. Nobody could develop it. It would sit for another twenty years uh to what effect? And then what would it cost to improve Latoria Road, which is needed, and improve the ditch, which is needed? I know the ditch isn't paid for by this project, these projects, but it is made available to be. So it's like buying the land for your new concert hall. You gotta get the land first. So there we have it. I'm conflicted. I don't know what to do with it all, really. The developers need to make a living. The project needs to go forward. We are in a city. Um, and there is a certain, I don't know, social contract that goes with urban life, I believe. That means you have to accept change. I've had to accept change where I live. The neighborhood street is dramatically changed since two thousand and one. And some of it I like, some of it don't. But uh we're all living in that reality and I like this proposal generally and I'm not, and I know the six-story buildings on Suk Road, they interfered with the neighborhood and we approved that. Uh, so I think that just going forward, I would support this plan in general. I get it. The if the numbers are to be believed that this is what we need, two point five F A R and six stories and that many a number of units uh in this market today and within reason, then so be it. Uh, I lived in Ontario at a time when the state felt like fifty percent in three years, commercial seventy percent. It 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 does happen, it can happen. I don't think it will here. There's a little different part of the country, but I lived through that. I live here in B C because of that situation. So I'm always caught in the fact that developers take the risk to move into a thing and develop and move forward based upon a certain faith that it's going to move in a certain direction. And that risk, they make some good, good money if it works out. And they take the risk and that's part of being in business. So for that, that's the developer's load to carry. And we're trying to leverage the best for the city. And I appreciate the work that's been done to this point with this plan because I think it's going to look great in ten, twenty years, whenever. Anyway, I I'll shut up. Oh, yeah, we've got another meeting soon, so.
Thank you, Counselor Grove. Um, Counselor Day, I just have a question myself. If I can do that, um, I think a lot of us have the same sort of concerns with this and um, you know, the report does say that that at the current F A R, one point seven five, the project's not really viable, but at far two point five, that it is possible with reduced or waived C A Cs. So I think we're all just wondering why is this a city problem? Um. And how is it advantageous of us for us to permit this? So what are the benefits to to us um as a city and to to permit this request?
Thank you, Counselor Olson. Uh, so the benefits to the city uh endorsing this plan, it would be the restoration, potential restoration and realignment of Latoria Creek. Um, seeing potentially some twenty percent of the units be uh go towards meeting a key area of local need. Um, preserving as much of the tree canopy as possible. As I mentioned, um, it would be one-third on on the properties itself, but potentially more when you include the land that will be transferred to the city. Um, and then while we're presenting the preliminary financial analysis and while we're taking into account uh the profit, the profit margins of the sites is really to ensure that um what we are proposing here will be built. Um, when it is more profitable or um supported by economic analysis, it I think will um give us more certainty that this plan will come to fruition. And we do have several developers um and applicant applicants who have submitted for rezoning uh indicating that it is possible. Um, so I think this plan provides um additional policy that goes above and beyond the existing neighborhood hillside designation to um really that um just provide more clarity on what we mean by what is a significant environmental benefit. So um, yeah, I think ideally um it's it's hitting, hopefully hitting the marks with respect to transportation, um, green space, environmental and housing. Um, if there are any comments on additional amenities that you think would be uh that you'd like to see, this is a perfect opportunity. We're here to um yes, receive your input on what you'd like to see revised maybe in the next version of this plan.
Thank you, Desiree. It's helpful for me just to have all the benefits listed all at once to really, because we tend to jump around a bit. Um, so just recognizing that we do have five more minutes, um, we are moving into regular council meeting at six thirty. Counselor. Okay, Counselor Day.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to clarify that uh what I heard from planning was that the floodplain issues are going to be left in the hands of the developers?
No. So I guess the hazard land development permit regulations provincially as well as within the official community plan are triggered when development is proposed on a floodplain. And so if it was to be the city developing those lands, we would be subject to regulations on the floodplain. If it were to be a private developer, they would be subject to expectations around the floodplain. So it depends what is being proposed. And there's different expectations. If it's residential uses, if it's just a storage, if it's just mechanical, it 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 is different for every proposed type of use and expectation. Are we talking about a driveway or are we talking about a house within a floodplain condition? So the floodplain is not disregarded, but it is dealt with as part of the development process. And there are development permit and a building permit and it's regulated provincially.
And uh just also the uh when uh thirty-five eighty came forward previously, moving the creek was a condition of development of the lands at the corner of Wishart and Latoria. And uh it was to be done by the developers. It appears now that we've moved to simply taking the land. Uh, is the city going to be responsible for the costs of remediating or improving the environmental conditions of the creek?
So the creek can stay where it is. But if if we decide to, if so the the condition, the requirement to enhance and relocate and move at the corner of Wishart and um Latoria was because there was development proposed. And so D F O and the provincial regulations, if development is proposed, then you need to prove enhancement and improvement of the current condition. If there is no development impinging within the current conditions, then there is no trigger for you to do better. Like at a minimum, you have to stay away from the uh environmental protection buffer. But if you are going to be developing the lands, then it triggers a develop, an environmental development permit that we refer to the province and then the province can lay expectations on an improvement and enhancement associated with a higher intensity of use along the creek. So those requirements, currently there is no requirement to relocate the creek. What we have heard from the province is also that they will not be asking individual property owners to relocate the creek on a property by property basis because it's not beneficial to the creek. They want to see if the creek is enhanced and improved, it should be one project that takes the whole length of that creek for the corridor that is moved wholesomely. And so this is why the land transfer is so important to achieving that environmental enhancement because the province has been clear that one owner asking to move a portion of the creek is is not a good environmental approach. And that they are not interested in a piecemeal approach to creek enhancement because it's not wholesome.
So the city is on the hook for any environmental improvements to the creek?
We could be currently, we don't own that land, so no.
I understand we don't currently, but if this project proceeds as is being described in the reports, then the city would take the thirty meters, the city would uh have the creek and would be responsible for any improvements to it.
Yes, like we are with Millstream Creek at the rear of uh Wilfer Road or any riparian area that we own. In contract.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and in the interest of time, we've been around the table. Can I ask um C E O to read the recommendation?
This was an update. There wasn't a recommendation, so this is uh letting you know where it's going next with the plan. And an opportunity for council to shape. You don't like what's in the plan, give us the direction because this is ultimately council's plan. Um, this is a bit of a unique scenario in that uh the city took on the development of this overall uh neighborhood plan or this this plan for this potential development of a number of different properties. And we can't preclude people from putting in applications and that's what we've seen come in with these uh properties as applications have come forward. Ownerships have changed over the years and what we wanted to do is to make sure that we're meeting the expectation of what council wants to see for this development based on the previous direction you've given to say that development would happen in this quarter under certain conditions. So that's why we brought this forward today with the analysis of looking at the density, looking at the different development scenarios and the realistic opportunity to develop. So um we've got some information from council here. We proceed, uh but there's no recommendation needed at this time.
Yes.
I just wanted, uh, because you were looking for feedback and I forgot earlier. I I would really like to see some limitations to access to the creek because of what we've experienced in Colwood Creek Park, for example, with dogs running into the creek and and creating hazards and problems. So um fencing that's uh able to maybe keep dogs in certain areas would be beneficial with entrance and exits and signage. So so that we could uh uh assist the public to help us keep it and environmentally sound.
Thank you, Counselor Day. Um, so my apologies, um, C E O. I would, I've read here that there was a recommendation and I was incorrect. So we're just receiving information, giving direction to staff to return. Okay, thank you. Um, so being that it's already five after six, um, I'm wondering if we should consider referring five point three um to the August twenty-fifth meeting of council. Moved by uh Counselor Johnson. Okay, is anyone opposed to that? Nobody's opposed. Okay, so moved. Thank you. Um, can I get a motion to adjourn? Moved by eager Counselor Grove. Thank you.